I'm sure everybody heard, just I want to pass along for myself and the board about Pete Frady's passing yesterday. We all know him, both in the country and the state. Boston took him on, but he was always a North Shore guy from Beverly, so a great loss. He's done wonders for ALS, for any families out there that have been involved. My family's been involved in it, and so I definitely appreciate the publicity he gave towards it, him and his family, and it's continuing on even after his passing. So, on with the meeting. We have first, other matters. We have 150 and 152 Sylvan Street, request by Fellows Construction LLC for an endorsement of Form A plan. Do we have a representative today? Please, use the microphone. And just give us your name.
Hi, I'm Zach Fellows, owner of Fellows Construction.
And just a brief synopsis of what's going on.
So what we're doing is we're purchasing 150 Sylvan Street to add another unit to it, to sell, and we needed some square footage from the neighbor on the right which owns both properties. So basically, we had it all surveyed, it's registered land, and now we're here to get it approved.
Excellent. Did the board have a chance to look at the packet? There's a lot line move. It is a Form A, lost the word.
Continue.
We're moving one parcel line over to another. I'm going to open it up to the staff. Josh, if you have anything to comment to the board for it.
Yeah, no, I just had to comment that both lots still have the required frontage, and they both have the required square footage, so they're both still conforming. Both lots are still conforming in every dimensional way.
Anything from the board? Jim?
So you're just, you said you're adding another unit? You mean you're adding another building?
Yes, a connected building to that one, the existing building.
So are you proposing egress for 150 onto Sylvan Street? Is that what's going to occur?
Yes, there'll be a shared driveway. The existing driveway will be shared.
For 150 and 152?
It will be 150 Unit 1, 150 Unit 2. We're not doing anything with 152 Sylvan Street, except for taking the land.
That might be what they're planning on doing, Jim, but today we're just moving the line.
No, I'm just asking my question.
Yeah.
I understand that, but I guess that most likely would be the motivation to get access to Sylvan, for that building, straight out on Sylvan?
Yes, we would use the existing driveway that's there that goes onto Sylvan Street.
I'm saying for 152.
152, as far as I know, is a commercial property that they're not trying to access that at all or anything.
Okay.
Nothing's changing there.
So it's just adding the...
Just moving the lot line so we get the square footage.
Square footage for additional square footage?
Jim, I think staff might have a better answer for you for 152. We discussed it earlier, Josh, about the...
Yeah, like, so their frontage now will be on Walcott Road.
Right. Well, that's what their frontage is now.
Even though the address is 152 Sylvan, but, you know, we're going to work with emergency services to maybe work through that in the future, but...
Okay. Okay, that's all I had.
John?
No, I don't have any questions, but...
Charles?
No.
Nathaniel?
I couldn't get anything to open on my browser. I'm just curious, is that residential property?
Yes, so...
We've got a hard copy of the plan here if you want to take a quick look.
No, I'm good.
Okay. I have nothing further, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the endorsement for the plan of 150 and 152 Sylvan Street.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have 309 and 309 R Locust Street, extension of completion date for meeting improvements and the tripartite agreement. Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the Advocate Rivers Living LLC, and we are requesting an amendment to the existing tripartite agreement simply to extend the completion date from December 30th to February 14th. The construction work was actually completed on this subdivision, but we have to have time to do the as-built plans and submit those for review and all of that sort of thing, so we've moved along with the subdivision, so we're just requesting an amendment to the tripartite agreement to the extended completion date to February 14th.
So this is more for crossing the Ts and dotting the Is before...
Correct.
Okay. Anything from staff?
Nope, it's pretty straightforward. I'm trying to make sense, going to...
Okay.
It's just, it's just an extension to finish up some of the required paperwork that needs to be submitted to the planning department.
John?
Just mechanically, when, when do we get the bank signature on these?
It's mine.
Oh, you have it? Okay. No other questions?
All set. Charles?
No.
Nathaniel?
Jim? All set.
I have no other questions, so it looks like we're just looking for a motion to extend the completion date.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck. Sign it now or after?
If you want to send it now, that would be helpful.
Sure. We can keep moving along.
Next, we have public hearings. 100 Independence Way, Liberty Tree Mall, request for a special permit. I just need to...
Can you both? Can you both sign?
Yes, I need to.
Okay, very good. Yes, sir.
Can I have the public?
Yes.
That's it, isn't it?
It's the other one.
You guys ready? I just got to open the public hearing, that's all.
Your turn, is it?
Yes.
Don't let us stop you.
I'm getting any closer to this. That's for the people at home. It's not for inside yet, so...
Notice hereby given that the Davis Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Tumi Hearing Room, 1 Sylvan Street, Davis, Mass. on Tuesday, December 10th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. On a request for a special permit submitted by Douglas Molina, I hope I pronounced that right?
Yes.
To allow an indoor recreational entertainment facility, adventure park service, in the C3 Commercial District pursuant to Table 1 and Section 30 of the zoning bylaw for property at 100 Independence Way, Liberty Tree Mall, Unit Number W113. Also shown on Assessor's Map 63 Lot 004. Copies of the application and plans are on file and available for public review in the Land Use and Community Services Department, Davis Town Hall. Mr. Molina?
Yes, the company's going to be cops of war. It's a Nerf arena. It's a phone blaster, they don't hurt. Kids here to play, parents get to play too, so something new to bring families together, and also we could reset any birthday parties. Just creating a fun atmosphere here. We already do it at Aloha Mini Glow Golf, we have at North Sherman, we have the Mini Golf, so it's pretty much same concept, birthdays, family entertainment, but not just doing a different vehicle.
So, just let the applicant know and the board where Ms. Zelinski's not here, Nathaniel has voting power, this is a special permit, and where, there's a special permit on the use because it is inside the mall as opposed to a whole site review. I'm going to open it up to staff. Josh, do you have anything for the board?
Yeah, so this proposed use, this entertainment indoor facility is going to be in a tenant space between Marshall's and the movie theater on that side. It was a former glitterati tenant space. No exterior modifications or site changes, or site changes are being proposed. We did consult with the planning department and added a couple of conditions, just requiring that if the proposed business was to locate somewhere else in the mall, that they would have to come back to the board, but other than that, staff has recommends favorable.
John, anything?
Not for the applicant, but when do we get a chance to talk to the owners of the mall about the access roads? When do we ever get a chance to review? I know they did some work recently with the access roads into the mall and in great shape.
Sure. I mean, it's probably, they're probably pretty busy around like this time of the year, but I think in January, February, we could probably, you know, reach out to them, you know, kind of start a dialogue and see, you know, what, you know, kind of create that type of relationship and what's going to happen, you know, in 2020 and what's happening, you know? I think that's something that we could definitely do.
I mean, there was one entrance that was really bad a few months ago, and it's been improved, which is nice to see. I'm just curious of expectations moving forward.
Yeah, I don't know if we've talked with them in a couple of months, but, but it's definitely something that we could do in, we could do in January, February, for sure.
But I didn't, I didn't have any questions for the applicant. I support what he wants to do.
I can tell you that it's improved dramatically, to give them a little bit of kudos, just my offices on the access road that goes around the mall. I know Jim's is around the mall too, and I know they improved over near him too, but you're right, it wasn't the entire road all the way around. They did bits and pieces of what was at the worst. Charles?
What are you expecting for noise levels? Kids running around screaming, shooting Nerf guns.
Well, it's not going to be that noisy because the space is pretty big, it's a 6808, which is nothing at the level of 90. So on the front of that area is going to be a lounge for the parents. There's going to be desks, there's going to be sofas, and then there's going to be like a net, so...
Mr. Molina, if you wouldn't mind speaking up just so everybody can hear.
Yes, so there's going to be a lounge on the, on the entry with tables and sofas where the parents can sit down and see the children play, so everything's visible. But that first area is going to be for the, for the lounge, so there's not going to be much noise. And inside, that's where the kids are going to be playing more towards the end. On the first section, also we're going to have merchandise, we're going to be having some gear, so it's not going to be very noisy because we know it's going to be more towards the back.
Right, and there's like a physical partition to stop the darts and everything from flying over?
Yes, it's a net, a back-to-back net, and that's how the parents get to see everything. And we also have, going to have TVs, cameras, cameras, TVs, so like there's, it's going to be like a miniature houses. You're going to have cameras even from behind, so when the kids go behind, the parents get to see it on the TV. So it's going to be, you know, making it safe.
Yeah.
Nathaniel?
I'm glad to hear that somebody's doing something to re-energize the Liberty Tree Mall, and why should Skyzone have all the fun? So, good luck.
Jim?
I'm just wondering, for a public hearing, for an application, there's no plan. We don't have a plan, we have a one paragraph, kind of forty-word sentence, and that's what we have. I'm just wondering as a matter of course, for a public hearing, don't we need a plan? Josh, can you...
So, I mean, generally, typically, I think if, you know, a site or exterior changes or an addition of some type was required, I think in this instance, a floor plan, I mean, the building department did want a floor plan, there is a condition, if we had, if we had concerns, there's a condition that I put in the special permit that a final floor plan shall be submitted prior to the insurance and building permit, but...
Can I say something to that? Talking about a floor plan?
Mm-hmm.
So yes, I already have an architect working on that, but I wanted to get approval that, you know, I am going to go through with it, because I spent thousands, so, you know, get a floor plan and then guess, you know, say no initially, so I didn't want to spend the money.
Okay, I'm not saying this against you, but just as a protocol for this board, for a public hearing, every other applicant comes in with a plan. This is probably the first time that we've had an applicant without a plan, so we don't know, granted, we know maybe where it is in the mall. We have no plan, we have no depiction of where the lounge area is, where the recreation area is. This is unprecedented, and I'm not sure it's a good precedent. And I know it's, it's a reuse, and I know it's good for the mall, and I understand all that, but we don't have anything to look at. What are we going to sign? A, a paragraph that gives us a narrative? I think this is absurd. We've never, we've never, never done this. I've been on the boards since 96.
I think in this case, we were debating that a little bit, and because it's a use, there's no site plan triggered here, so...
Why are we here for this?
Triggered a special permit for the use.
But isn't the use allowed?
By special permit, and so we requested the floor plan...
But doesn't that, isn't that a protocol? Isn't that a requirement when you make an application to give a plan? So we know what we're looking at, so we know the square footage, we know where things are?
Regs aren't quite clear, because normally, the book is built assuming that you've also triggered site plan review. This, there's no exterior changes, there's nothing that triggered...
Well, even with interior places in the mall that we've had before, you know, we've always had a plan. There's always a plan that we're going to endorse, that we're going to, I know you don't need it to sign it for site plan, but we, we don't even know what we're...
If that's the feeling of the board, I would suggest a continuance and we can...
I'm just saying, you're setting a precedent.
Again, I don't, we're not trying to set a precedent, what, we were confounded a little bit in that it didn't trigger site plan approval, so we had no site plan to work off of, and we were trying to do the best we can.
But for him to say, "I'm not going to spend the money unless you give me the approval," well, that's kind of, well, that's kind of in front of the board.
Agreed.
Every other applicant that comes in front of this board spends the money, that's a cost of doing business, and brings, brings a plan, that's an engineer plan. Every other applicant, whether they get passed or not. So why does he get a pass on the plan?
In this case, what we would be receiving would be an architectural drawing of the improvements that he's proposing to this space. Is that acceptable?
What does your zoning bylaw say?
That's what I'm saying. It doesn't appear to trigger the requirements or site plan approval, all of that is...
What is town council saying? I mean, I don't know. Are you, are you making interpretation that you're telling us now? If I didn't raise the question, then we're going to endorse something without any type of proposed plan. We don't know what the heck the space looks like, we don't know how many people he's going to have there, hours of operation. I don't have any of that, nothing. We have one sentence that's about forty, forty words long, and we're going to approve that. We've had applicants in here that have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on plans for a public hearing? I'm not trying to be a hardass, but I mean, this is what rules are made, these are requirements. If you don't want to spend the money, then, you know, you have to spend the money. You have to show us a plan. That's my, my interpretation of the zoning bylaw. Every applicant we've ever had here has brought a plan, whether it's a plan that they recycled or used that someone else had done and written on, which we had one of those on 114 once, which raised the same type of concerns. And, you know, whether you're a mom and pop starting up a new shop, or you're a big corporation with a franchise, you know, are we making exceptions? If we're making an exception, do we need to change our bylaw and have the town meeting approve that change? Or do we have the power?
Right.
Or do we need an interpretation or a legal opinion that we can do this? I don't know. I'm just concerned, and I know that this staff and everyone that, you know, you guys have been very strict on, on cleaning things up and making things by the book.
Yep.
It just seems kind of odd that we're just...
No, and we did with the goldfish...
We have a forty-word sentence.
Oh, no, I hear, I think just real quick, I'm not contesting anything you said or deviating from anything that Aaron said. To your point, we do need to change the book. Right now, there isn't anything in there, so his project doesn't trigger site, site plan review at all. So that's kind of where we're stuck, where all he needs is a special permit for just the use, so there's no, there's no other changes. It'd be, you know, if Market Basket went away and something else went in that was just a different use, but they were doing no other changes. It's just a condition of the use, and our current bylaw basically says everything goes to the ZVA unless designated to the planning board, and so on our use table, it just says SP, which is to you all, but I think it contemplated, as Aaron pointed out, no one would come in unless they already had triggered site plan review, but just unfortunately for, well, not unfortunately for the applicant, but where we're at now, that didn't happen. So he's only asking to do the use in an existing space, he's not changing parking or anything like that. That's why the site plan wasn't triggered, but I hear what you're saying completely.
But when you come in, don't you open up the whole site to review? Don't you, you don't open up that location to review?
There's no exterior changes, there's no changes to the zoning requirements, it's just a use that we've said you need to ask us special permission. Your point of hours of operation, et cetera, that's all valid, and again, I would recommend if the board feels similar, let's continue it, work with the applicant over the coming, you know, couple of weeks, and we'll come back with all of that information.
And you could still, with the special permit, condition hours of operation, you could condition noise levels, whatever you want to do. We'll go out and do decibel testing, however you want to do it. It's just, the current bylaw didn't trigger site plan. I agree with you that the regs need to be updated.
I mean, if someone went into North Shore Autobody on Route 1, didn't change the building at all, and put adult use in there, and they just...
That would trigger something else, brother.
That's not, that's not a good comparison.
Well, it's, they're not changing anything in the building.
This, but this is more like just stepping in.
They're not changing, they're just, they're just changing the use.
This is more like if a facility, like if Stop &amp; Shop has a Dunkin' Donuts inside, and they decided to leave and Honeydews went in, that's essentially, that's the kind of use change that this is triggering, because nothing else is changing.
Right.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but...
They don't have to give us anything.
We could, I mean, from a, from a planning board policy, we could request, or, you know, we did, we did request a floor plan, it just, it's not, wasn't prepared for tonight, you know, it wasn't...
You're talking about interior...
I'm not disagreeing with you, I picked up on the same thing when it came through, Jim, but all I'm saying is, after looking at it, because it triggered only site, only because it triggered a use change for a special permit, but not site plan, that's the reason.
If the guys from the dog training company are watching this, they're going to be blown away. We made them come to three meetings.
But they had external uses.
For dogs using the grounds.
It's not a comparison point, that's how I'm getting at it.
I'm just saying, we made them come to three meetings.
I understand.
And they had full engineer plans, and they had to spend a lot of money to get approval. Three meetings. So I just, I just want to be clear on how we're going to proceed in the future.
Right.
If this is something that's, needs to be tightened up, it needs to be put on the May town meeting or something, or the next, or the February town meeting, you know, maybe it's something that should be buttoned up. I don't know, it just seems odd to me that we can avoid having to do certain things, and maybe we'll give you a plan after it's approved? That's, that's not, it doesn't sit well with me, so I would not vote for it in the present form.
But we've got to go through more approvals, we've got to go through the inspectors' approval. It's not the first time that I'm opening a business at a, at a mall, it's not the first time. You're saying that everybody comes with a plan, I open in different places, and every, every place is different. You know, some are easier, some are harder, you know, you're making them a little bit harder, but the thing is this, that you're talking about, you don't know about how many people are going to be able to come in? Well, for example, I opened in Liberty Tree Mall. When I went to the, see the inspectors, they set the limit, I didn't set the limit, so they did it at the end, so I'm not, you know, trying to say this is what I'm going to do and this is exactly what I'm going to do, no. I'm going to stay first step, this was my first step, get approval, you know, so I can continue to the next.
But I don't know what I'm approving, sir. Normally, people will come in, they'll have a plan of the site, they'll say, you know, we expect to have, we expect to be open from, I don't know, after school, from three...
Well, that's the deal, that's everything's different. You were telling me, why didn't I bring it?
Can I finish?
But committed different places, everything...
But you didn't present anything.
But...
You have not presented anything to me to make a decision.
But you said, oh, you just got to want to make money.
I'm not going to argue with you.
So it's not so negative about that, no.
I'm not going to argue with you, but...
It's not about the money, no.
You haven't given us any information. You didn't tell us hours of operation, you barely told us the square footage.
The mall hours, have to follow the mall hours.
You don't, you don't have to. You, I mean, you can't go beyond them, but I mean, we haven't given us any information about the site. You haven't said how many days a week, how many employees, how, any of that normal information that we would obtain from an applicant. We don't have any of it. At least, I don't have any. Maybe you told someone you didn't tell us, but all I got was a one sentence, about thirty-word sentence for the narrative on this, no plan, and nothing, so I'm not prepared to vote. I'm not prepared to vote, maybe they are, but I'm not.
I'm not doing it.
We haven't, we haven't voted on anything yet, sir.
I'm not doing it, I'm not doing it, no.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you, guys.
They didn't call a vote, I'm only one person.
I ain't doing it.
That's fine.
Thank you.
So I guess we're looking for withdrawing of the applicant at this point in time?
We should continue, just in case.
Let's, yes, let's, let's do this. Before I throw it out to, this is a public hearing, before I throw it out to the audience, does anyone else on the board have any commentary on the plans or lack thereof?
Yeah, I share Jim's concern, and I'm glad you brought it up, Jim. I mean, I don't want to make it difficult, but we should be consistent.
Anyone else have anything else to add to this before I open up to the audience?
No.
Okay. It is a public hearing, if anyone has any questions or comments?
Town meeting member, Hill Bradstreet, Precinct 1, listening to the board, listening to the gentleman, I think his point is well-taken. I don't want to beat around and say the same thing over and over again. It's already been stated, need more information. And obviously, withdraw without prejudice or continue it, but it's up to you.
We'll go with the wheel of the board on that. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Doug, and Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. I think it's unfortunate that the applicant got caught up in this situation where there's, some of our zoning bylaws are vague, and there are times, we've seen it recently with other situations, where sometimes the bylaws are open to interpretation, they're ambiguous, so I think it's unfortunate that the applicant was kind of blindsided by this. I think the town should reach out to him to kind of give him some guidance, to get him back on track. Maybe if he knew there were more requirements that the board was looking for, that he perhaps would have had those available, so I would, I would hope that you could kind of reach out to him and invite him back, and I assume that he would have that information. I would be interested in knowing the hours of operations, the capacity, the security, if you have a facility or establishment that attracts young children, teenagers, I'd be interested in knowing what the security guidelines are for kind of keeping, keeping them safe, minor children safe, because it seems like that's the, kind of the target audience for this business, so. But other than that, it's inside the mall, so I'm thinking it's, it seems like a benign kind of activity to me. Nerf guns, maybe if it was paintball or something like that, it'd be a little more exciting.
It would have, yeah, it'd be something a little different, I think, in terms of what the board...
But just one last thing to the land use comments about the bylaws, so there's always bylaws, I think, that can be reworded or kind of clarified over time. They're kind of like living, kind of document, the zoning bylaws, so I think we should always kind of remove the ambiguity and make it so it's clear-cut, black and white, and I think it makes life easier for everyone.
There was a discussion earlier that where the mall has been a bit more, it's had a few of these recreational uses come in in the last two, three years, have gone in and out, and it triggers this type of a special permit, but when they're inside the mall, it doesn't necessarily trigger a site plan, which is like to your, what you're, what you're discussing, well, we may need to, we need to probably take a closer look at that, but that's not something you can do overnight.
No.
It's a process, as we all know.
Yeah, it requires a lot of thought and, you know, input from town council and from others.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Mrs. Huber.
I was told to be careful. I have not attended these meetings, but this was very enlightening. Shouldn't the applicant be guided through what's required for a special permit, similar to what you just spoke about? Now, I don't know who does that, but somebody has to give guidance to our residents and our business people that are trying to establish a new business. our business people that are trying to establish a new business.
That's what staff does, and that's where the ambiguity in this particular site came up.
Well-
It was interpreted by staff in this type of presentation, but that doesn't mean that the board has to accept that presentation.
Correct, I understand, and I'm glad somebody spoke up and, and delivered the eulogy to this thing, because it is not proper the way it was presented, because the resident and the business individual was not prepared for what you expected. So, I know that about three months ago, there was a proposal or a comment made to the Board of Selectmen, and you prob-, maybe never heard about it from the board, but there's a process of permits and applications for starting a business. What is that process? There was supposed to be a dashboard that was prepared to guide the individual business people through the process with the assistance of the town hall. I mean, we're here to help them, we're not here to hel-, to hinder them, like this gentleman just felt. He walked out, discussed it. So, I, I would suggest that we need a lot more assistance to develop our economic base and assist our residents to be fruitful in getting their permits from boards like yourselves. Thank you.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Staff is working on a business development guideline of sorts, but I also want to say, we do offer a lot of technical assistance to our applicants, but at the end of the day, it's their application, and there's many times when we tell people, this is, this is short, this isn't gonna be enough, or, and, there are times, and I'm, I'm not putting words in his mouth, but there are times when they say, thank you, I appreciate the advice, I'm gonna do it my way anyway, so again, and some of the particular questions here, we were kind of, uh, the bylaw was exceedingly short on what is required in this particular case, because nothing else was triggered, um, some of these questions, hours of operation noise, we as staff don't know what it, about, you know, a particular application in a particular location, what the five different board members might bring to the table. Um, so again, I think it's, hopefully tonight, if, if there are substantive comments that we can forward onto the applicant, hours of operation, we've obviously heard, noise levels, layout, we've already tried to get the floor plan, um, at least we can give him that much information, and if he chooses to withdraw, because that's too much for him, then that's, you know, unfortunately, there's nothing we can do and no amount of technical assistance on our part is going to, you know, help him in that case, but we do try to be as, as helpful as we can be, I mean, that's, we don't want to waste our time, your time, their time, um, so.
Anything else from the audience for questions, comments? Before I bring it back to the board, um, I'd like to make a recommendation that we continue this with the idea that we're going to get a floor plan, hours of operation, and a number of employees, and associated security, even if some of it's what he-
He walked out, Phil, he walked out of the meeting, he essentially withdrew.
Does that mean that you want to continue or withdraw?
I would think I would entertain a withdrawal without prejudice, and then not charge him a fee if he comes back, because he's already paid a fee, I assume.
Yeah.
I think that would be, you, you're continuing, he left, why would we continue something if he clearly stated he's withdrawing? I mean-
Anyone from the board have any comments associated with either continuance or withdrawal?
I, I, I don't, it doesn't bother me to continue it, you know, I mean, obviously, if he had just hung around a little longer, he might have gotten out the company wanted, um, so.
He has to sign a continuance at the meeting.
Okay.
He's not here, how can he continue the meeting?
Okay, I get that point.
That seems to make it pretty clear, Pat.
It seems to me that he's, you know, interested in more of a withdrawal. Nathaniel?
Well, if he, I mean, if what Jim says is right, and I have no reason to doubt it, if he needs to sign something to continue it, then how are we gonna continue it without his signature?
I don't, I don't know if that's a requirement, I think, I don't know if that's-
No, we always have them sign, a continuance date after sign.
You can just make a motion, right?
No, but the applicant has to ask for it, and, or, we used to, they used to always sign.
Typically, they ask for it either prior to the meeting.
To extend the action deadline?
Correct.
This is, we're not inside any danger of the action deadline, the special permit, once the public hearing is open, I can, if the public hearing is maybe continued, I need to add in tonight, and the next action deadline for a special permit is to call and close a public hearing, and which time the board has ninety days to act. So you're in there, you don't need his permission to continue, you don't need his permission to close, you don't, um, you could, I, fiat, say we're gonna continue this hearing, um, but again, again, he walked out, I mean, that, that is what it is, so.
He made it pretty clear that he was not interested in continuing.
Right, I think if, if you close the hearing or accept a withdrawal, accept that as a withdrawal, people have to re-advertise, which would mean you won't see him in three weeks or whatever, that next meeting is-
January four-
You'll have to re-advertise, you'll-
January fourteenth.
You'll have to re-advertise, so, it would be, right, so it'd probably be, you know, February realistically, maybe the second meeting in January if we were on the law.
Well, I'd like to just say that if, if we don't want to discourage him, or if we want to encourage him to come back, I, I suggest that we continue it, and then, if he hasn't come back, if like, I, I'm assuming that somebody from the town's going to reach out to him, try to talk him off the ledge, right, and come back with the things that we, that we require of him, that, that would be more palatable to somebody in that situation than to say, now you gotta reapply. So, that, if we don't have to have a signature, then I'd be in favor of continuing it, and hopefully we can encourage him to come back. But we want to encourage the development of the north, of the Liberty Tree Mall, I think.
I agree with that, Senator. So, I mean, he can always, if he says, no, I'm not interested, then we can close the public hearing, and move on, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can accept the withdrawal at the next meeting if he so chooses to not continue.
Right.
So it looks like the will of the board at this point in time is to put out for a continuance on the special permit. Do I have a motion for either one?
I'll make that motion, to continue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor to continue?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. So at this point in time, it's continued for our next meeting for the January fourteenth, and at that time, we'll bring this to a close either through the applicant or through a Next on the agenda is a public hearing associated with character based zoning districts for downtown and High Street area. Just quickly, um, we don't have Ted Bro-, um, Ted Brovich is not here today, uh, he had a family emergency, could not make it, um, our staff is stepping up to the plate for, to take his place, uh, we have Aaron and David Fields here also, um, how this is gonna go, is we're gonna talk today about what was presented to us from before and the specifics of the zoning that's in front of us. Uh, it was presented to the Board of Selectmen a week ago, uh, for them to forward back so that it can be a warrant article. This is one of the public hearings that we've had, one of the many ones we've had over the last two years of this process, um, and we will have more, not only on this board, but also Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee. Today's meeting is, um, going to be about the specifics of the zones, both in the downtown area and also on the High Street out to 128. We're gonna be discussing more the specifics of what we can do to make changes and what changes have been made to the zones from the last meeting that we've had. At the end of this meeting, we're gonna be voting as a board about whether or not to forward it to Board of Selectmen to be a warrant article, we're not forwarding the finished, completed zone, we're simply forwarding that we wanted on the zoning law, on the special town meeting in February, end of February, and it's one of the things that we have to do along the way in order to get it from a timing standpoint. So with that being said, uh, does anybody here, has not been this first time to the meetings associated with this, that wants the whole rundown? Otherwise, we'd like to have an abbreviated version of it, and we can go quickly to questions, both from the board and also from the public, and it's gonna start with staff, and then gonna move on to the board, and then back to the public after that.
Okay.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Okay. So, um, before we touch on a few things, um, as Mr. Prentice said, I think there's a couple of specific points we want to dive into, um, a little bit of detail, but I thought I'd give a brief overview, so in the packet, we included, um, draft text for the motion, um, and wanted to go over that a little bit with you, but I thought as a, kind of a ten thousand foot overview, to maybe make some sense of this, because there's a lot going on. So in December of two thousand seventeen, town meeting adopted what is today in the zoning bylaw called Section eighteen, the Maple Street Traditional Neighborhood Development Overlay District. Working off of that, everything you got in your packet, um, was in this, so, there's a number, about half of this is design standards that apply to the overlay district, and the other half are the details of what can happen in the overlay district. What we've done here is basically pulling Section eighteen apart, existing Section eighteen, we're pulling that apart, and I'm kind of proud to say that really all we're adding to the bylaw is about ten pages, um, but it's gonna be three, actually four new sections. Section nineteen would be the details that are specific to the downtown core district. On the map here, that's in the teal color. Of course, my computer wants to work. So this color here, so, there's a brief section there that has the specifics about what will be allowed in downtown core. Section twenty becomes what's allowed in downtown live-work, this district here. Twenty-one, section twenty-one is the standards that are applicable to the High Street mixed-use area, and then twenty-two becomes the specific requirements that you've already adopted for what is today Section eighteen, but in this book, we're calling it Section twenty-two. What's left in eighteen are all of the specifics that lay out the development types, the design standards, the parking requirements that apply to all of those districts, so again, really the only thing we're adding is the specific language needed to create those new districts, and the particular standards that may deviate from what we've already discussed. So again, um, that's essentially what you had in your packet this week, as well as like an expanded summary that we envision coming back to in January to discuss in more depth, that might help, be helpful to describe the process and this proposal at a very high level for town meeting members and interested members of the public. I would say that we're very close, I'm saying we're probably in the ninety percentiles of where we, where we think we are with the draft. Mr. Brovich drafted this as Section twelve, Section twelve's currently occupied by the prohibition on retail marijuana sales, so at the staff level, we moved that all down unfor-, to eighteen through twenty-two. Unfortunately, the references in the text often are pointing to twelve, so we are going through the bylaw pa-, page by page, sentence by sentence, to correct all of those references, to make sure that anywhere in the text version that we put out in the packet, it says, please see Section twelve dot whatever, whatever, we're pointing that to the appropriate section. Most of those references are going to point to eighteen, because eighteen is the overarching character-based zoning district standards. That said, there are a couple of points that we are looking to clarify, and I think I'll turn it back to Bill, but I'll put these on the table for further discussion at the appropriate time. And we talked about it last time, um, not pursuing forty R means we don't have to do this as an overlay district, we've offered this version as a base zoning change, the board had some questions last time about the pros and cons versus doing that, we've developed a table of uses comparison between what, uh, you have as a property owner, if we do, do that as a, leave the base alone and do this as an overlay, I think the short version of that is, uh, there aren't many uses that I think the property owners would be sad to see go, uh, you couldn't do a marina downtown, um, you couldn't do a fuel storage depot, a warehouse, um, so there's some fairly industrial uses that we'd be knocking out. Adding to that, most importantly, is the opportunity to do residential and mixed-use development, which I think would enhance the property values of, of, of these properties. So we do want to get some clarification on that, and we're happy to answer any questions on that. We did also, since Friday, when we put the packet out, we are going through the existing book, again, line by line, to make sure that we didn't miss anything, I will tell you, we have, appears that we did miss a few sections, that said, it's not the intent for us to not have an outdoor lighting standard, it's in the current Section eighteen, it will find its way into Section eighteen again, but we need to go through that, we're doing that right now, line by line, to make sure that we've captured all of the sections, um, as they moved around. Um, and then finally, we've gotten two letters from home, homeowners abutting the district who wish to be included in the district that are presently in the R1 district, um, and I will point these out, it's hard to see, I admit, on this map, one property is the one abutting the Verizon building, they've asked to be included into the live-work area, and then likewise, there's a property that's kind of kitty corner across the street from him, next to the High Street service garage, there's a single-family home on the corner of, um, I was gonna say, it's, it's not, yeah, it's Porter, uh, Porter and High, that is also asked to be included in the live-work. So, these are property owners that over the summer, Mr. Fields and I, there's about seven properties in between these two districts, we actually had a backyard meeting with them over the summer, because they're so uniquely impacted by these proposals, that we really wanted to make sure, we went the extra mile and, and spoke to them, um, they weren't unhappy with the proposal, um, we shared it, we opened our doors to them if they had any subsequent questions, and the only communications we've had from them in the month since has been these two property owners asking us to be included into the zoning change, so that's something we need your opinion on as a board, because, uh, we don't, we're not sure if we should or shouldn't do that. So those are the three points that we need to touch on, overlay versus base, um, letting you know that there are some sections that apparently didn't make it from our cut and paste job over, that we want to in, make sure we insert, updating the references, um, and then these two properties. So, I know we've done the roadshow many, many times, Ted gave me a forty-six slideshow presentation, I'm happy to do that if you want to see it for the twenty-fifth time, but, uh, I figured we'd do the summary version tonight.
Can you briefly discuss the, um, the change in the affordable housing percentage also?
Oh, thank you, that, yes, um, that's probably the, uh, one other major change that we're, we're contemplating. Part of the forty R regulations require twenty percent minimum inclusionary housing requirement in all developments. In doing a deeper dive, and, you know, we did talk about this issue at the last meeting, and doing a deeper dive, um, on that, we are proposing in this draft, backing that off to twelve and a half percent, ten percent is the state threshold, so at twelve and a half percent, we still move the ball forward, every development in some capacity will be contributing to the affordable housing inventory of the town. For smaller developments, we have a payment in lieu of schedule, um, to kind of make sure that even if you're doing four or three, you are contributing, today, that's a little bit of an ad hoc basis, you usually go, um, to the Affordable Housing Trust and you negotiate a deal, and we've done some analysis on that, and, again, part of this process is about creating, uh, consistent and predictable outcomes. Right now, if you look at the permitting, um, or the recommendations coming out of the applicants and the Affordable Housing Trust, it's all over the map, we've done, you know, seventy-five hundred dollars for three units, we've done twelve thousand for two, I mean, it, it's kind of been up and down, so what the bylaw is trying to propose is kind of a consistent standard such that there's no horse trading here, you know what it is going into it, what you'll be asked, um, for a contribution, that might, typically it'll be units, but if you're a small development, it won't be units. Part of the reason why we're toning that down from twenty down to twelve and a half is also a little bit of economic feasibility, right now, there's only one community in the Commonwealth that is at twenty percent outside of a forty R district, that's the city of Cambridge, and if you've been following what's going on there, um, hasn't been very successful, and as Mr. Fields likes to remind me, um, twenty percent of zero is zero, um, the city of Boston's at thirteen percent, uh, a lot of suburban communities are kind of trying to stick around that twelve, twelve and a half, thirteen percent, it gets you ahead, um, and it doesn't ruin the pro formas for the developments, and it lets something happen, so, again, I think we'd be better off with twelve and a half percent of something than twenty percent of nothing. Um, so that's our recommendation, we're happy to take more questions.
That's still above the town bylaw for, of ten percent currently, so-
Yep, yep.
It does make a, it, it does create a higher proposal than what we have on the books currently. Um, I'm gonna bro-, open it up to the board, uh, Jim, anything in particular?
I, I just think we've got just a few properties between the two zones. You know, I, I would maybe double check with those people, I, I think it would be better to include them in the HSMU, um, because, once it does get developed and they see more housing and more, more, um, perhaps density there, then they're gonna be coming back, and they're gonna be wanting special permits, they're gonna be wanting to be in it, I think, I think right now, it's an island that really should be cleaned up to- to bridge the gap between the two former, well, the industrial zone and the commercial zone. I, I think just having seven properties there, or five properties now, is a little ridiculous.
Now, I was surprised, I know it's a little off-topic, but what you can do in C one and C one A right now, the height, remember, height in I one is fifty-five feet by right. A lot of the uses that are in I one are allowed in C one and C one A. I was quite surprised, like wholesale, trade, that's a heavy truck, uh, kind of thing. There's some of the self-storage and some of the heavier stuff. So I was pretty surprised, um, at the intensity that we can get there. The height comes down in C one, C one A. But something to consider, Jim, would be you, you're saying, suggestion of bringing eight, the High Street mixed-use up. Again, they, they've talked about li- the live-work being there, but again, we're, um, we can do whatever the board directs. And again, I know you wouldn't necessarily.
It's more of a main thoroughfare, it's High Street.
Yeah.
You've got a gas station there, you've got the old friendlies there, you're right. You're within, you know, stone's throw to the other district, so why not just make it all H M, HSMU? It's not gonna affect them in their present use of the property, but it gives them additional uses in the future. And, and you know what's gonna happen. If it does, if they get developed, they're gonna say, oh, I wanna, I wanna be part of this. Now they gotta go to ZBA and, and get, get the, the use allowed.
We can certainly double back with them and get some over, over the, I'm sure they'll be willing to talk to us over the holidays, but we, we'll, we can reach out to them and, and get some clarification, um, on that. But I'd like to hear other board members as well.
Just to further that, Jim, I do know that the intent of what we were asked to do from both Board of Selectmen and ZBA was to actually make it one contiguous zone from the forty R that we started over on the Maple Street all the way over to one twenty-eight, instead of it having been, instead of it being kinda patchworked along.
Right.
Uh, but it does, you're right, though, it does leave those seven properties, or now five, if we decide to put them in, along that thoroughfare that's the entranceway to Danvers from one twenty-eight essentially, where there's these one or two houses.
It's like one fourteen. You still have a couple houses there.
I know, I know.
But I mean, they're all zoned, they can turn around and take the highway corridors.
Yeah.
So why would you create an island?
But it is residential at this time, so.
Right, but you're just gonna give them additional uses. It's not gonna change their current underlying use.
No, exactly.
It's gonna.
I, I would say from a zoning amendment perspective, under the statute, under the forty A, uh, statute, the zoning change, you can't broaden it as the process moves along. You can only narrow your scope. So in theory, to Jim's point, if the board were inclined to consider this, you're better off saying, we're going to consider them in, and if they want to roll it back, that's better. But in three weeks, on the floor of town meeting, if they were to rise and say, no, you, we want in and we haven't allowed them in, we will be foreclosed from including them, just because of the way the statute works there. So again, point of order on, on how that works.
Okay. Anything else, Jim?
No.
John?
No, I, it does look kind of strange that that's, but what, what was the rationale, Aaron? I mean, obviously, leaving it out initially, what was the mindset?
Well, again, I mean, this proposal's large enough that we didn't want to, and we figured we were, we had a lot going on, that we didn't wanna incidentally poke them, and which is why we sought them out specifically, to have a meeting, to figure out if they had an inclination as to one way or another. But mostly, I would just say, was to deal with C one and C one A and High Street, that was our charge, and we felt that that was a little bit of outside the charge, but recognizing the uniqueness of the situation there.
So how do you start that? I mean, I, I support what we wanna do on High Street, but wasn't there another property initially that wanted in?
Yep.
In a different district?
So initially, I gotta get my bearings here, where's Town Hall? Here, initially, um, these properties that are just outside of the building here on Park Street were drawn out, and they came forward, I wanna say in May of eighteen. It was very, it was over a year ago, certainly, um, and asked to be included in the district. And we did that when we've, most of the drawings, although again, I think I saw an image of one still cutting it out, but.
Was it then when we did our first, like, we were putting houses down on, yeah?
Yeah, it was the tabletop. I think that was May of two thousand eighteen, where they asked to be included. And as you recall, when we were doing the forty R overlay several years ago, some of the properties over on Oak Street were also in that situation, where by the end of the process, they were asking us to be included. So again.
So do you feel we've got the, the right break now? Because you could almost look at that entire yellow in the middle there.
Yeah.
Are those people gonna say, well, why aren't we in?
Well, again, I mean, we, we, oh, I mean, all of this.
I mean, is it a natural break? I mean, that's what I'm.
I think to, I think, I don't remember which board member mentioned it, but I mean, I think it's, it's being along the thoroughfare for us that was distinct from being behind, um, in the neighborhood. That was those seven properties made them kinda stand out.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Again, we weren't thinking, I think at the staff level, the most I would say is I thought, thought we would get live-work there. But again, if the board wishes to go.
No, I just wanna make sure that we have a good explanation of why, if these questions come up in the future, why the other ones weren't included. And, you know, I support the High Street one. And getting back to the percentage of affordable housing, it, it would be helpful to know what's other communities, Aaron, have that number. You know, and why it's twelve and thirteen. I get it, there's gotta be a balance between the economic drivers. You know, so that, to me was, okay, well, why wouldn't it have been fifteen, for example? You know, so I'm, I just want to, I think twenty's too much, and I just wanna understand twelve and a half.
Yeah, I think, again, I don't wanna act like I have the answer offhand, but having been in prior communities where this question's come up, and we've had to dive into it quite a bit, it's really about the economics of it, where ten's a political floor.
Yeah.
It's gotta be at least ten if you're gonna go forward with mixed-use development in most suburban markets. You are starting to see some of the inner Cork suburbs talking about fifteen, but again, not all of them have the economics to make that happen or are allowing developments of a size that can internally subsidize that number. So you're seeing twelve, twelve and a half, thirteen as just that landing spot where it's pushing it forward enough that the development community's grumbling, but not, not submitting projects after adoption. Fifteen and north, you're seeing the development community holding off.
That's helpful. That's all I had, Bill.
Charles?
No, I thought Jim raised a really good point. I'm interested in the transportation aspect, still. As we develop High Street, what are we looking at in terms of like bike or bus lanes, something other than just cars?
Mike, do you, would you feel more comfortable speaking to that one? David drafted the Parking and Transportation Demand Management section of the bylaw.
Thank you, thanks, Charles. So the section that we wrote in essentially, I don't know how much was covered at the last meeting, but, um, three dollars per net new square foot will be contributed to a fund, uh, should it go forward. Those funds will be held in an account to be used at the discretion, I'm gonna say at this point, of the board or other town entity. Most likely, when they come forward, it'll be up to staff to look at what is actually happening, what are the traffic impacts, and what are the uses? And then probably, much like DTAC does to the Board of Selectmen, present a recommendation on what should happen. So we don't have a plan as such to say, oh, it's gonna be bike lanes from one twenty-eight all the way out. Uh, we may end up doing that, but, you know, the, the proper treatment might be something completely different. There's simply just widening sidewalks or adding pedestrian street lighting. So as projects come in and the uses continue to happen, I think we can further develop that and give ourselves discretion to essentially take the best uses at the time. For instance, not that anybody's brought it up, and it probably won't happen, but bus rapid transit lanes, you know, we don't even, that's not contemplated now, it probably won't be for twenty years, it probably won't be ever. But we don't wanna foreclose that by saying we're doing something else.
And I think the, the twist here is, you know, typically, the developments come in and do a traffic study, and they tell you, well, I need to do this, this, and this in order to make my development site work. But in this particular case, what if we wanted to emphasize bike lanes, street furniture, and new street lighting to enhance the experience? And we said, well, rather than have you spend a hundred thousand dollars on making sure that that works for you, we're gonna take that money through the mitigation fee, and we will, as a group, uh, the, you know, the town, develop that plan for the streetscape. And again, maybe some of that comes from the development's work, but I think we're trying to turn that on its head a little bit, um, and make that more of a community-driven process such that the develop, as the development happens, we're addressing the impacts of that development from our perspective, as opposed to, um, just making sure their development works.
Just maybe, so Jay's on it. I'll just stand up here. Uh, one point, just to the transportation section. I just got notice from Mast dot that we were approved for our tier-two for complete streets, so that's a prioritization plan we gave to the state. They said your plan's good to go. So theoretically, next spring, we'll be able to apply for additional monies to put towards traffic and transportation improvements, uh, on a complete streets-related node.
And of the ones we put forward, there were several downtown?
There were multiple items on the prioritization plan that are in this district. Quite a few in Danvers Square, uh, up towards the bike path. And then I think we went all the way down to, uh, right near the, right near the friendlies on, or the former friendlies on High Street. Quite a number of projects in that district already, so hopefully that helps.
If I could just jump in off of that, piggyback off of what Charles was saying. You, you mentioned the fund. Is that gonna be in the, um, warrant article about, in the, is that gonna be in the zoning about where that fund would?
I think, uh, I believe, I think it got created last spring.
Okay.
I believe the.
So we're piggybacking off of a current fund that's, okay. And, and is that something currently that DTAC or Board of Selectmen?
Well, as.
Or is it just on, is it something that the town manager would disperse out?
Yeah.
It's gonna be, these are gonna be questions that people are gonna ask, that's why.
Yeah, no, the, the fund was created last year at town meeting. I can't remember its name, the Downtown Stabilization Fund.
Okay, now I know, I remember which one you're talking about.
Do you remember?
Yeah.
And so this is what we would envision being, receiving those funds. And then on the planning board, as contemplated, would lead the community through a planning process to say how those monies should be spent on the streetscape, um, anything for bike lanes, curb cuts, whatever, whatever we decide it, we want it to be.
I'm sorry, Charles, you mean to butt in? Do you have anything else?
No. I don't think so. No, not that I can think of. No.
Nathaniel?
No, I have nothing to add to what I said on November twenty-sixth, other than that my position has not changed on the subject.
Okay. I don't really have anything else to add beyond what the board said. I do wanna remind the board that we are gonna be talking about overlay ver-, 'cause I was the one that brought it up, overlay versus, um, zoning cha-. Yeah, on base change of the zone. Having looked at what, I was concerned that the present owners would lose, uh, some of the value to their street properties, but it looks like this would only enhance it. And on top of that, I think it's better for the town. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I think that's something we should discuss. If they, if you don't wanna do it now, we can bring it out to the public and talk about it after.
The overlay versus base zone?
Yes.
So you're endorsing your.
I personally am endorsing now, 'cause I was more of a proponent of the overlay. But now, after seeing that, I think it's better for the applicants and for the, not for the applicants, for the, uh, owners. Yeah, the property owners and for the businesses, uh, for the town to stay with a, to go with a, uh, base zoning change as opposed to an overlay, myself. If anybody has any questions for staff about that, or any comments about.
No, I, I tend to agree with that as well.
Okay. Having that been said, the board's had its chance. I'm gonna open up to the public. Please, uh, raise your hands, use the microphone, and just give us your name. Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Duggan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. So I'm kind of pleased to hear that the town is kind of backing off from embracing the forty R. Chapter forty R, which relinquishes some of the local control, uh, and it hands it over to the state in return for some one-time payments. Once we've, uh, handed over the control, and I think it's the Department of Community Development, they really kinda have the final say over things like density and setbacks and other types of things. So, um, I don't think we really need forty R for these overlays. I think we can kind of tweak what we have, but I'm still not clear on how, uh, this, uh, these changes are gonna impact Table Two in terms of density, the number of dwelling units that are allowed per acre. I'm still concerned, not so much with Maple Street. When this was presented to, uh, the selectmen last week, several selectmen said they were really concerned about Maple Street in the downtown area. I, I disagree with that. I think High Street is more susceptible to kind of, uh, overbuilding in a, in a way because, um, there's properties that are single-story businesses, uh, dry cleaners, laundries. Those businesses or those uses are not really, uh, financially feasible going forward as what we've seen, uh, in, in other towns and cities. The land is so valuable. And, and I'll give you an example of seventy-five High Street, which is between Verizon and McDonald's. In the back there, you may be familiar, it's just a wide-open field. And, uh, those, those, uh, that strip mall, single-story, uh, uh, structure could easily be demolished, and you'd have, I don't know, three or four acres of open land. That could be developed with, with, uh, who knows how many, uh, units? If it's, uh, allowed to be fifty-five feet high, that was just mentioned, because it's still I one with the overlay, you could put maybe a couple hundred, uh, housing units in there, something like the swing-away development.
No, you can't combine the two. No, that's not how this would work. But we're, we're contemplating on whether or not it's a zoning, a base zoning change versus an overlay. But if we did, even if we went with the overlay, you can't combine the fifty-five feet of the industrial zone use and then turn it into mixed-use on top of that. That's not allowed. But currently, they could build fifty-five feet currently in the industrial zone areas.
All right. I'll get to that in a minute. Right now, um, irregardless of accepting forty R, there are two bills at the State House. One has to do with restricting, uh, a butter's, uh, ability to, um, say they have standing in any type of appeal for development. And the other one, um, reduces the, um, two-thirds majority required today to adopt zoning changes. It changes that to a simple majority. So that allows, uh, a smaller group of people in town to kind of determine what, what, uh, development will look like. Just one last comment about the transportation. So if you look at the MPO, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization, they have on their master plan for that area, um, on the corner of Purchase and High, next to the highway, a, uh, and a, a thought to build a huge parking structure there, similar to what was built at Salem Depot. And the, uh, the idea is to get cars off the highway and, um, use that parking structure. And then the rail corridor, the right-of-way, that's behind Walgreens, that, that line goes to PBD Square and then into Salem Depot. And just, uh, earlier this week, we saw that there is gonna be a trial run where a trolley will run from PBD Square over to Salem Depot to see, it'll have a dedicated route and not be in traffic. So it wouldn't be a stretch to, to bring that concept all the way, uh, into Danvers. So in that case, increased development in that area makes sense because you don't need as much parking, perhaps. You could, when you can combine higher density with, uh, with mass transit, it's more, more palatable, I think. We've seen that in Reading and in Winfield, so. But that's down the road, that, that probably many years. I'm just, just one final, uh, thought. I'm just still not clear on what town meeting is gonna be voting on in February. Is, um, at some point?
There'll be a finished product of something of what we have in front of us right now.
Yeah.
It'll be, it'll be a similar zoning law change, uh, will be in front of town meeting. And there may be some other zoning cleanup things associated with it. But the main part of it is gonna be what's in front of us today, are these two zones. And we have got them done in front of us.
And I've, I've said this before with the Hot Lock property. You know, we can, we can define these, uh, these until by, bylaws, but, um... define these, these until bylaws, but the applicant can override, get those overridden by going to ZBA and arguing that they have some type of hardship. They have a financial hardship because they paid too much for the land?
No.
Or they have a typology?
Not a financial, no financial hardship will ever get you a ZBA approval. That is not a hardship, that's allowed under Mass law.
Well, that's what happened at Two Pond Street. That was a financial hardship that allowed them to exceed what's defined in Table Two.
It's not a hardship.
We see that at the ZBA all the time with variances for the setbacks. So when we define these bylaws, they're not cast in stone. They're, they can be easily overridden, and no one has standing to be able to challenge those, so. That's really frustrating that I see that on a regular basis, and I don't know how to, how to kind of curtail that behavior. That's all I have.
Okay. I'd like to answer one part of that question. I'll leave it up to staff about the density on this. I know that it does, as you get closer to the streetscape itself, the density is a little higher and then it trails back, but it's not one contiguous density across the board from downtown all the way to 128. That's not the intent of this. It's gonna scale back as you get farther away from the commercial zone. From the standpoint of other boards and what's allowed, and whether or not findings are given, I really don't wanna comment on that. I don't think it's fair for our board to start commenting or critiquing what other boards do. I can tell you, like Jim says, that everything that I've seen come in front of us for any ZBA relief that was given, there was never relief given for anything to do with money that's come in front of us, that we have seen in the minutes that we get associated with the site plan approval.
As an attorney, Bill, I mean, that's familiar with the process. It's a public process. People have the ability to go to the meetings. There's an attorney presenting for the applicant typically, and the town has town council. The town has the, you know, building inspector on the board. So it's vetted, and it's a full process that any open meeting would have. So to say that, you know, there isn't a process that can be, people can't make their opinion on, and people can appeal the decision. So there is a, there is a judicial process that can be done. So I would take, you know, exception to some of the comments at the end of your statement, which kind of gloss over, and say that anything that is gonna be passed by the town meeting can be easily switched. They have to show justification for it. You have to show a hardship in order to get, you know, it has to be lot configuration, lot size, you know, geographic-
Topography or so.
Topography. There's rationale that has to be. Financial hardship is not a hardship under Massachusetts law. That, that's a, you know, it isn't. And whether the board is, allows it or not, you know, that's not something that's, can be put in a decision. That's not something that is, is a criteria. It simply is not. So I just think some of the things that you said at the end of that statement were not correct.
Eric?
Go ahead.
I don't want this to turn into an argument.
No, I know, but that's just my empirical, that's what I've seen in the past. So I used Two Pond Street as an example, because that is above and beyond what the bylaw says is allowed on that lot. And no one can challenge the ZBA, because it's a quasi-judicial board. No one is, really has standing to challenge those decisions unless they happen to live next door, but someone down the street or someone else in, like in Town Hall, I don't think they have the legal standing to challenge that. So the ZBA really has the final word on, on zoning in this town. We can disagree, but that's my-
I would disagree with that.
Sitting at these meetings, that's what I, what I observe.
I'm also not gonna throw ZBA under the bus. This is, if there's issues that you have a problem with ZBA or anything, or how they're making their findings, that's something that needs to be brought up to other boards. We do discuss things back and forth, and these two boards do work hand-in-hand in terms of sometimes relief versus site plan approval is given, but we don't actually bounce off of each other in terms of ideas on things like that, so. I wanna throw it out to staff real briefly. If you could give us a quick synopsis of the density that we're talking about?
So the downtown, going off of what we did in the first 40R district, the downtown core is a little bit less when you get to the multifamily and mixed-use buildings. Those districts are 20 by right, 36 by special permit. Again, there's some criteria about how you get, you don't just get the 36 by asking, you have to, in theory, offer things to get to the den- you know, it's a density bonus. Downtown core is max, maxes out at 24 units an acre, so that's, it's a, happens to be, it just landed in our lap. The 20 Locust Street redevelopment is 24 units on an acre. It's, you know, rounding errors, we'll call it, 24 to the acre. So that's the maximum in the core. Live-work goes down from there. High Street area is more like the 40R, the Hot Walk Corner, where we allow 20 by right, up to 36 by special permit for multifamily and mixed-use. So those are the development maximums. There are some standards in the design guidelines that talk about how many buildings can I put on a lot, how many units can I have in each building. Again, all designed to minimize the massing of any given structure. The largest, I think you can, number of units in any one building is 24. So again, even if we were to grant somebody 36, that would be broken up over multiple buildings, so. And I would say in general, just, I think we did look at the build-out analysis on that High Street property you mentioned, and I think it's much lower than the number that you gave, but point well taken, that that's a larger site.
I think it's important, I think it's important that you state that, because people are creating a certain concern over that, so it's important to-
So that's-
-provide that example, perhaps-
Yeah.
And say, if we were to maximum build this particular property, you have to, you have to have parking-
Yep.
You have to have access around the buildings for the fire department, you have driveways, you have to have, you know, some green space. So this isn't gonna be, you know, all pavement and big brick buildings.
Right.
You have to have a certain amount of landscaping, you have to have a certain amount of, you know, area for parking. I mean, if you're gonna put in two bedrooms, or probably that'd be the max, you have to have so much parking, visitor parking, and, and, you know, all that.
And I think on the High Street side, again, I think downtown core, part of why we've lowered the densities in the downtown core is because the typical parcel size is much smaller, and that those, those standards that we've set are gonna be much harder to meet in the downtown core, and that's in some, you know, that's by design. I think in the High Street, the properties are much bigger, so there's a little bit, I, I'm not as worried about the parking issues on the High Street side, because they have a lot more land to play with, and they should have no problems meeting our design standards when it comes to all of those site features. But nonetheless, those are properties that, you know, have a lot, a lot of those standards put on them, whereas downtown is really gonna be tight. So I think that those standards are going to work very well on the High Street side.
Can you refresh me on the percentage of landscaping on High Street? Because if you look at the site right now, where McDonald's is and that strip mall, you've got probably about 2% landscaping.
Today?
Yes.
The McDonald's site is-
If you would've, if you would've built that out to the standards that you're talking about, you're gonna see a lot more greenery, and you're gonna see a lot more-
Yeah.
You know, it's not gonna be this straight parking lot with road buildings.
I can't answer that off the cuff, just because there's so many particulars. The McDonald's site is actually carved out on the parcel map, out of the larger site there, but we can get you that information and share that with folks.
But do we think, do we, do you know, David, is it 10, is it 20%, 30%?
I believe the way that Ted's laid it out, it really depends on what you build. There's not a raw percentage, so if you wanted to do townhouses, there's a certain amount of green space. It depends on what typology of building you wanna go forward with.
Right.
So there's a lot of different scenarios. Needless to say, I think all of them, it would be more than what's there now.
I think that's gonna be helpful in the upcoming meetings, so that we can present that.
We'll use that site. Mr. Kontos, who owns that site, has been in our office quite regularly, and I don't think he'd have a problem with us kind of using him as an example.
Right, true. And the property right next door is on the market. I think it's 67. That's been on the market for a couple million dollars.
The Village?
Jimmy's Pizza.
Oh.
That's strip mall.
Behind it.
Next, yeah, closer to Town Hall, closer to Town.
We can probably ask Ted to work on that when you guys up and running.
I'm gonna open it back up to the public, please. Yeah, can?
Nova Samadade, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I like the idea of a base change to the zoning as opposed to overlay as well. Sounds like that would be the best route for the town. Property owners, maybe they would want to do something warehouse-related, but for the town, I don't think it would be a great idea. I did have a question about the 40R on Maple. Was that a 20% affordable housing? And do we know if that has been a problem for, like, there's been no development there? Do we know if that's been detrimental?
It is pretty soon. It's only been a year since it's been-
Yeah, no, I know, but, you know, there was just such like, hey, it's gonna be great.
This meeting was here earlier, we've, you know, we do try to communicate regularly with him and whatever, if there's any assistance or anything we can offer. We have not gotten any specific feedback from the lead that that particular issue or another has been, has been an issue.
I guess I was just wondering if, if that's not necessarily an issue, why we're pulling it back?
Well, I think the other thing that I would expect, what we do, I feel comfortable saying out loud is, in that instance, expect the properties in the MSTND to come forward looking for maximum density.
Gotcha.
Like, they, they will come in looking for a 36 an acre, I can guarantee you that much.
Right.
And that's in large part because that, that criteria is going to drive that.
You don't think they will anyway? Just because property's so expensive? Who knows?
I don't know, but I think what we were trying to do was, we calibrated this proposal, was not put us in that situation where we say it's a density bonus, but we know we've gotta give it every time to make it work. I think at 12 and a half percent, it's not a, for, gone conclusion that we will have to do that.
But to go 36?
Yes.
Okay.
Just as an example, there is a site, it's on Locust Street that's being built. It was, it was, they started it before the overlay went in, but it actually, density-wise and size-wise, is pretty much falls in line with what, what the overlay is proposing. So that, that site over next to the ambulance on Locust Street there, that they've been, they've been working on it for about a year and a half to two years?
Baby shoot, right?
Yes, yeah.
Good example.
Yeah, but that's, that's kind of the online with the density and commercial on the first floor with residents on the second.
I was just curious about the affordable housing thing. If it's not a drawback for development, then why do we wanna take it away? Why do we wanna put it down to 12 and a half percent if it's not a problem currently? Like, maybe we say 15 instead of going all the way down to 12 and a half. We don't know it's a problem, just start.
Right. Okay. Did, David, do you have anything to add to it?
The only thing I was gonna add was, the property at Locust Street that Bill's mentioning does come in at 12 and a half percent affordable. They, they offer three units to the town on what they're currently building, so, for what it's worth, development of that type can accommodate that number. And again, not to beat a dead horse, but as I say to Aaron, 20% of zero, zero, 12 and a half percent of whatever it is, at least gets the numerator up a little bit, two and a half pers-
12 and a half percent, you're right.
Correct. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Ms. Louberg.
Thank you very much, Marg Zawark, Precinct Seven. My concerns have been based on the Lee property 40R zoning that we passed last year. At that time, it was very difficult to determine what the density was gonna be. It was, this, this language in here is also very similar, I think it is the same, but the issues about density is that it's going to change the character of the town altogether along our main thoroughfare coming through downtown. You have heard from various town meeting members and even selectmen that this zoning does not resolve or address the parking, traffic, and density. Maybe not in that order, maybe density, parking, and traffic. I received a copy of the proposed charter-based zoning districts this evening, and I started looking at it, and now I understand why former selectmen and town meeting members have asked for a zoning change instead of an overlay change. Because this is so fluid and so adaptable to any situation, you get a good attorney walking through with this thing, and they'll get whatever they want, and the maximum of whatever you're allowing here. And therefore, I'm very, I don't know, I would not vote for it right now as a town meeting member, because the parking is not well-defined. There is no stipulation of how many units, how many parking spots you're gonna have per unit. I mean, it's, it's very fluid, and the issues that I have is that unless we have things defined a lot more closely to what a zoning article is, or what a zoning supposed to represent, at least from my understanding, maybe I'm looking at it from the, you know, dinosaur age, but this is, this is something that businesspeople are going to take advantage of, and they're, they're gonna build out to the max. Is that what we want? Is that what we've been challenged to do? Personally, I, I don't think so, but the, the specific parking issues, I, can somebody just give me a, a example? Let's say you have a 24-unit building built out on High Street. How many spaces are you gonna need without going through the shared parking or mixed use, or proximity of parking facility, payment of parking fund?
37.
36.
36 spaces.
For the residents only, not even including any, any commercial?
How the scheme works is there is a standard for parking.
I was looking at it, that's, that's why I brought my-
And that sets a standard. The applicants may then offer to the planning board other ways of reducing that account through other techniques, which we call parking and transportation demand management, so you could manage the demand of the, of the developer. But again, the zoning is very clear. It sets a standard for parking for development, and then it's on the planning board to evaluate if they ask for, well, I'm gonna do tandem parking, so I, or I'm gonna try to lease a space from a neighbor. That's all then discretionary evaluation by the planning board at the time that the permit is applied for. That said, the zoning, again, has standards that the applicant reads the bylaws, says, okay, one space for each two seats. They know what that is coming in, so we've, we've got very clear standards.
But in the long run, if a developer is clever enough, they'll reduce that to, I don't know, 24, 20?
I haven't seen anything come in front of our board ever that we've allowed a reduction like that.
Well, you're allowing them reduction here by shared parking and mixed use. You're allowing proximity of parking facilities, you're allowing use of public parking-
But you're, you're making that extreme, though, when you go with those numbers. You're dropping it down to one a unit.
What are the unintended consequences? That's what I'm getting at.
That's doing your parcel, if you took, for example, the Hot Walk property, which is 11 buildings, which they sought approval to demolish, which is kind of the reason why it's taken this long to do anything over there, is a one-year demolition delay by law- there, is a one-year demolition delay by law, which they have to get through. But now if they look to those 11 buildings, again, if they're gonna build, say, 11 buildings on the 11 lots, then you may have some shared parking between and among those buildings if it's one developer and it's one development, okay? Or there's arrangements. But we're, we're not gonna allow them to drop it to one space per unit. That's not, that's not what, that's not what this board would do. And I could tell you as a member of the board, we would not do. And just to say that, that someone has a, a lawyer that is creative or a lawyer that is gonna present something, that doesn't mean they're gonna get approved. Every site is looked at on its own face. And, you know, to say, we're gonna spend three years to develop this zone and we're gonna pass this bylaw, and to say that it's not gonna have any teeth in it, this is the most comprehensive bylaw I've ever seen with design standards and parking standards that this town has ever seen. So I, I think that's, that's kinda, you know, creating, trying, trying to create a, a fear that this is gonna be, you know, steamrolled into town and you guys are gonna have to live with additional, you know, limited parking and all this new development. I think that's, that's sending the wrong message. Because this is a very thought-out process. And again, this is a process that has been endorsed by the town manager and the selectmen who have put the charge to us as planners of this town to plan for the future for the town, to look at these industrial and commercial zones to try to allow for another option, to allow residential use, to bring some more business into downtown, but also to provide for one, one-bedroom apartments for millennials and for seniors. And, and that's kind of the motivation. We're not the first town to do this. A lot of towns are doing this throughout the country. So this is smart growth planning.
I agree with you.
This isn't, hey, let's, let's have a free-for-all downtown and, and make it Boston. Build the skyscrapers. That's not what this is.
Well, no, we have Rosewood, that's enough.
Well, that's, that's a.
Totally different story. That's a very different story that goes way back, yes.
But the thing that I'm trying to get to is if, there, there's been a lot of discussion about parking, traffic, and density. And the density, we haven't experienced that kind of density downtown yet in any building, I don't believe. The only thing we have is along Route One on, you know, the condos. But here, what are the unintended consequences? And, and the thing is that it seems to be everybody you talk to, it's parking, traffic, and density. So I, I'm just, I know this thing will probably fly through town meeting just like the last one because it's, it's something that's new, but I think we're not looking 20 years, 30 years ahead of how does density and the parking is going to increase and how it's going to affect the residences that are around the area. So that's my major comment, but I, I appreciate getting a copy of this thing because I don't, I don't think many people have read it, but I, I know they have the opportunity.
It's been available in many forms, not just in paper, but also online.
I agree.
Yeah.
But the question is now is, is this the only meeting the public is going to have a chance before it is submitted to the Board of Selectmen as a warrant offer?
Uh, not at all. No, there's another, I believe we have another public hearing set before it's presented to Board of Selectmen finally, and then it goes to FinCom after that. I don't have the checklist in front of me, I apologize.
Yeah, I think we have it up here.
But this is a required, a public hearing.
Yeah, this is the required public hearing. The proposal won't, again, I would imagine, I believe the Board of Selectmen are discussing it on January 6th or 7th. I apologize for not knowing the Tuesday off the top of my head. January 7th, the Board of Selectmen will be discussing the warrant in detail, so I imagine members of the public will be providing comments to us on that evening. One week later, we have a, the planning board has a meeting, but at the same time, probably in this room, FinCom will be meeting, discussing the warrant. So I imagine there'll be some comments coming out of that that we would want to incorporate. And then I think the planning board will have probably, I would say, the second January meeting, I would imagine, would probably be our last chance to kind of see it before the zoning workshop, which is scheduled for February 9th. I don't have it right in front of me.
February 1st.
February 10th?
First.
February 1st is the.
The town meeting, the zoning workshop.
Yeah.
Yep. So again, I think while we want, the, the cake is in the oven and it's, it's, you know, it's almost done, I think we expect, you know, if, if there's comments coming out of any of those sessions that we want to, that we think make the proposal better, I would, I would assume we will incorporate said comments such that the version that gets to the floor of town meeting is as close to perfect as we can get it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Bradstreet.
Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I think I'm probably gonna get off the subject a little bit with the parking. Say if you have two bedrooms, two parking spots, and it seems, if that's the case. At one of the meetings, I believe someone said that, well, the residents will leave during the day so that will open up parking for, say, businesses or whatever else. And I brought the question up, say you have 100 parking spots for the people who are quote-unquote going to work during the day. My question was, what happens if they all decide to stay home? Where do the 100 cars that might be taking those spots while they're away, where do they park? There aren't, there's, where do the other 100 cars park?
I don't think it's gonna be necessarily a shared parking one for one like you're describing.
Again, I'm just saying that's just one aspect that I recall hearing presented that, I don't know when it was. Anyways, the presenter said that, well, these spots, these spots will open up because the people will be going to work or whatever. And my, and again, my question was, what if they all, they're all sick or they all decide to stay home that day? Where do the people park that are trying to get there to make use of the service they're looking for? If you don't offer parking to a business, again, you're, you're hurting the business because everybody wants, everyone wants to park in front of a business to do their business. There aren't enough spots. And when you talk about public parking lots, some people won't walk from a public lot to a business. Yet they'll go over the mall and pack two miles away and walk into the mall and walk around. How do you change the, I don't know, the attitude of the people who want to do business downtown, the downtown area, make it comfortable for them to know I'm gonna have a parking spot, if not right in front of the business, but close enough? I'm sorry if I.
That's okay, but the regs don't stop simply at just the residents. There's gonna be parking regs also for the commercial combined with that. So if there's, let's say, 100 spots are required for the residential, there would be additional parking that would be required for the commercial with the idea that maybe a certain number of those spots, maybe they only need 10, maybe five of those could be shared between the residents and the commercial. I'm gonna let Aaron or David.
David's done a lot of work on the shared parking aspect of, of the proposal, and I'll let him explain that in more depth. But I do wanna say, you, you said something, Mr. Bradstreet, that's really key to hone in on, which is, how do we change people's attitudes on that? The good news is we don't have to, per se, because when the development comes in and is before the planning board for its permit reviews, you know, it is what it is. So in this, you know, I'm just making it up. Say this particular development has 20 parking spaces for residential. When I sign my lease, if I'm interested in, and it's built, and I'm now looking at this potential property, and I have one car for our household, and I'm told, well, guess what, in the lease, you're not, you're not getting parking with your unit. You're getting a unit and you're getting access to a parking space for overnight parking, but you're, you're not guaranteed any lease rights to those parking spaces between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM or whatever it is. If that doesn't work for me, then I don't lease. I move on. And I thought of this, you know, it's kind of a bad analogy, but I've been a dog owner since I was in my early twenties, you know? Not every landlord lets me live in their house with a dog. And I don't get into a stomping, you know, argument with him. I just simply move on to find a landlord that allows me to have the dog. So it's similar to that. If I'm a two-car family and I got a one-car bedroom and the landlord, I love the apartment, and he tells me I only get one parking space, then I move on. So again, these developments, it's not our job to necessarily change the behavior. It's simply, we're laying out the expectations for performance of those developments, and the people will self-select themselves as to who can tolerate those conditions and who cannot. And I think, again, we've done a lot of these changing demographic roadshow presentations over the last couple of months. I think what we're seeing is younger generations that are coming up and the older households that wanna get out of the single families, those are two demographics that seem to be ready to consider some of those changes. And again, so we don't have to plan for every baby boomer and every millennial. We're just looking for, you know, the right ones to occupy these, these proposed developments if they are actually.
Well, the other thing on that too, Aaron, is like a city, like Beverly, for example. Beverly, you've got a lot of new development on Rantoul and Cabot, and you end up with a lot of one-bedrooms or two-bedrooms, and, and you may have a one-deeded parking spot for your condo. But what they have done is they've gone ahead and they've got parking stickers. So you can, you can park on the street if you have permanent parking. So if it did become a reality that this, these spaces were built out, then you're gonna see more permanent parking for overnight parking. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be flexible, it's gonna be public lots, and that's, that's a byproduct of that development. And people, like you said, are gonna say, okay, well, one car's parked here in the garage, and the other one parks either out front.
And this process will take so long that it, that's not gonna happen, you know?
Well, that's how, that's how they have addressed that problem.
Right.
You know, because they didn't have, they didn't create new parking lots in downtown Beverly. That's how they deal with it.
You can add two of his friends.
I'm old, I've been around for a long time. I've seen where people have purchased something, and then after they purchased it, they start complaining, I'm here, I'm now, you have to change for me as opposed to before you buy something. A prudent person would check to see what, all the restrictions, everything, before they buy. I've seen it happen before in town, maybe other circumstances, someone buys something, and now I'm here, so I expect whoever, whatever, to change to accommodate me. I don't wanna see that happen. I think that's, I don't know, very selfish on the person. As they're saying, if they buy something, they don't read the lease or whatever they expect, while it's all common language, they don't do due diligence, and afterwards they find out, well, gee, I don't like this. You have to change for me. I don't think it's fair to everybody else that everybody else has to change for a person or a small group of people. I don't know how you address it down the future, in the future. It just, I've seen it happen. I just don't want, I don't think the town deserves to be put in that kind of a predicament that, yes, we want development, yes, we want business, yes, we want places for people to spend the night or live. But then someone comes in and things aren't exactly the way they want. Again, they didn't do their homework, so you have to change for me because I'm me, I'm special, so you have to change. I don't think it's fair to everybody, anybody, to have to put up with something like that. How do you prevent that from happening?
I'm not sure you can make zoning like what you're talking about.
I'd like to see that we try to do the best we can. Again, that's why I cited the example from one of the meetings I went to. The idea was, well, there's all of these spaces and all these people are gonna work during the day, so these spaces will be open for the businesses. Well, if everybody stays home because they're sick or whatever, now all these spaces are missing, now the business, no customers. Are you fair to the people who live there, or are you fair or not fair to the businesses that are trying to make a living by running a business there? I'm not, I don't have the answer. I don't expect you to give me the answer. It's just something on my mind, thinking about, and I'd like, I appreciate it if you people think about it, or who have, ever has to think about this to try to come, some common ground, some reasonable ground, something prudently thought out. Again, I don't know how you come up with it.
Well, if you look at this, if you look at, for example, the Locust Street property, for example, the ideal baby shoe, once that's finalized, they've got 24 residential units above second or fourth floor. First floor is gonna be 5,000 square feet of commercial space.
Right.
Now, they're gonna have five parking spots in front that are gonna be parallel with the street. They've got parking in the rear of that building, and that parking is pretty much gonna service the commercial use. And you also have street parking. Across the street, you've got at least 20 spaces that are gonna handle the residential part of that. So that's a well-thought-out development.
And I'm not saying that, I'm not disagreeing with you that it isn't well-thought-out, but that's one example. Maybe there are other examples that are quite as agreeable, I suppose. Maybe that's not the right way to put it.
Yeah, but again, a developer's gonna, if we're marketing toward the one-bedroom units, for example, or even studio units, if they don't have enough parking for the people that are gonna buy it, people aren't gonna pay $250, $300,000 for a one-bedroom unit, they don't have parking. I mean, there are places, you know, Boston, Beverly, telling them that you may not get parking, and you're, you're at the mercy of public parking. But it, it's something that people adapt to, and something, something that people pay so much to park in a parking garage for a month because they wanna live at that particular location. But that, that's, let the buyer beware. If you're buying something, you're gonna be made known of that stuff. You have the opportunity to look at the, you know, rules and regulations of the condominium. You have the opportunity to, you know, if, if it's marketed, you know, you're gonna say, is there parking? Nope, you get no parking. If I own the house, there's no parking. So you gotta find parking.
And good luck. And the public lots that are downtown, I've heard that described as, that's where you can park after you buy something downtown, doesn't provide parking spot. I just find it hard to imagine that someone would buy a unit knowing there's no parking. The only alternative is, oh, a town parking lot that's, I don't know, I'll say exaggerated, eighth of a mile away.
There's street parking. There's plenty of street parking. You drive, drive your car through downtown now.
Right.
Plenty of parking downtown. Plenty of empty spaces.
That's under ideal. What happens when there's a snow emergency and there's no on-street parking? Now where do they go?
Public parking lots.
Okay, I'm just, it's just a question of.
No, that's where you'd go, most likely, a public parking lot in an emergency, which is maybe a one-day event.
Okay, and if the town, if the town needs to plow it out, do they tow the cars, plow them in, or how is it dealt with?
The town uses flashing lights, it uses the telephone, leaves messages on every town's person that has a landline, or I don't know if they've got the cell phones, but this, this is communicating. But there are plenty of people that, that buy units and don't get parking.
I'm not trying to argue with you. Those are the ideal circumstances. Unfortunately, the way the world is today, everything is not ideal. And I'd like to try to see the unplanned for, the non-ideal dealt with. The people one is advantaged as others. It's all supposed to be sharing the town, globe, earth, whatever you wanna call it, we're supposed to be sharing it. Obviously, it doesn't work very well as we read in the fake news.
Thank you.
Anything else from the public? Questions, comments? Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the board. Any further discussion from the board?
The only, the only thing we haven't really talked about, and I don't know who's gonna have oversight, is, you know, consistency in the, the look of the facades, right? You know, there's a great opportunity here to, to reposition the downtown and make sure it, it has the same characteristics that we want. You know, for example, I think Elm Street's very well-done. You know, the consistency of the colonial look. So my question to the, to the staff is, who has oversight of the right facade looks? Or is that really gonna be up to the individual architects and developers?
I believe the design standards do indicate some. I believe the design standards do indicate some of that, but I'm not sure about a contiguous design on the front, from one end of the building to the other, on different properties. I'll let David answer that one.
Sure, yeah, the design standards do spell that out pretty well, so they are standards, you don't, you do have to comply with those. So when they, an applicant comes in for site plan for you, they have to comply with part of those standards as part of the package. So ultimately, if you'd like them to do something different, you could point that out at that point, but I think the look that, the look that Ted and Dodson Flinker had developed is similar to what was approved for Maple Street, and, again, consistent with some of the development that you'd see on Elm Street, I think, for what you're looking for. In terms of the fenestration bay windows, architectural details, you know, not just the vinyl rectangle with windows in it, so.
I don't think it goes down to the color or anything like that.
Does not get into color, no. Thank you.
I don't think it goes that extreme.
We'll ask about it, though.
I'm sure we will.
You can ask about it.
Definitely ask about it.
I'm sure we'll be on the checklist.
Somebody downtown thinks that they were pick the color of the building at 45, I can't remember the specific address, but the one above Booty's in the salon. Because they, they push it, I mean, they gave us a couple of options, and I think we picked a certain one because it had features in it, not so much the color, but anyway, so...
If we could pick out color, I don't...
But I think the board will and has, and probably will continue to have a strong hand in fine-tuning what the design guidelines offer us.
If we were out to control color, I'm not sure that McDonald's roof would be the color it is. Not to go back on another property, but that was something we discussed a while back.
That's helpful.
Anything else from the board? No? Jim?
Well, I just hope that every board member has had an opportunity to ask all their questions, and also, if they have recommendations or changes, that they wanna present, that now is the opportunity to do so.
So we're hearing none, unless anybody else from the board has any questions, comments? I'm gonna throw it out to the board now that I do wanna present the question about zoning, yeah, zoning law, base zoning change versus overlay. Is there any comments about moving forward with that?
I'm for the base.
Yeah, I'm for the base, too.
Okay, so we're all in agreement on that, too. I think I'm looking for a motion now for us to move forward with presenting the warrant article to the next step, which is Board of Selectmen. So I need a motion.
So moved.
Oh, I have a motion.
Oh, we have one, actually?
Yes.
Great. I don't think I can read it. We're gonna let our clerk read it.
I think it's like the we... All right, to the town clerk, this is to certify, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5, the dam is planning board conducted a public hearing on December 10th, 2019, at which time, by a motion duly made and second, it was voted. We, the dam is planning board, forward a favorable recommendation to amend the zoning map and zoning bylaws as follows. Move Section 18, Maple Street, traditional neighborhood development, overlay district to empty Section 22. Insert new Section 18, character-based zoning district. Insert a new Section 19, dam is town center core district. Insert new Section 20, dam is town center live slash work district. And insert new 21, High Street, car to vixues district. Yet other technical changes required to maintain internal consistency with the zoning bylaws.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Next we have on the agenda item is minutes for November 26th and December 5th. Do I have a motion to accept, or a conversation there?
Well, I'd like to have a quick conversation on the December 5th. I was not there, but I did read the minutes, and there was some concerns around getting mortgagee sign-off, you know, in regards to that change. And I just would like to have us revisit that topic at a future planning board meeting, so that all of us could participate in what we expect going forward. You know, to me, it's not, especially since we're accepting tripartite agreements, where these lenders are involved, working in partnership with us, that we should have a, in this case, I understand there was multiple parcels, multiple lenders, probably, it was, you know, probably difficult to get, but big picture, I just wanna understand what the standard is, because I think there was a misunderstanding of when and we don't, and when we don't get them.
Okay. Then what we'll do is, we'll put that, we'll table that for staff briefing, if not, either tonight, on another later date. But from the, from the minutes...
Mr. Chairman, can we break up the votes, because I wasn't here at the 5th, so if we could...
Okay.
I would move to pass the minutes or approve the minutes of November 26th, 2019?
I have a motion to accept the minutes of 29, for November 26th, 2019. Do I have a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion for December 5th?
I wasn't there either.
Then can we even move? I don't think we have a quorum for November 5th. Okay, so we'll have to hold off, and we'll have to continue on November 5th to a later date, and we'll have to, just because we don't have enough board members for that, so. Is there anything else that staff has, or questions for staff at this point in time? No, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
I'm sorry.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, thank you very much.